All right, welcome everyone. It's six o'clock on the evening of May 6th. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Rich Nagel, I'm the mayor, and I will be presiding at the meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome everyone, and if you haven't signed the sign-in sheet, please do so. At this time, I will have a roll call of members of council members present. Councilmember Batchard.
Here.
Councilmember Hattlestad.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Call.
Here.
And Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
All council members are present. Also in attendance this evening, on my left, is City Administrator Pat Melvin. I would imagine City Attorney Ross Arneson will be attending. He would be over here on my right, so... With that out of the way, are there any changes in the agenda? That one? Just the one that's highlighted on the back, item number 17, under unfinished business, approve or deny a signature of motor vehicle purchase contract for the tanker truck area department. So that's the only change. Anything else?
Oops, sorry.
Hearing none, motion is in order to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchard, second by Councilmember Hattlestad, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of the following items. Approval of the April 1st, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the April 15th city council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the April 15th city council workshop meeting minutes. Item D, approval of the bills. And item E, approve police officer James Knoxon's performance evaluation, whether rating of commendable performance routines exceed expectations and requirements and authorize increase. You've heard the consent agenda, or is there a motion to...
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Yashewski, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Moving on to public hearings. At this time, I will recess the regular council meeting and open the public hearing on the 2019 Street and Utility Improvement Project. City Administrator Melvin.
We have City Engineer Jason Femright here. Jason, would you like to open us up and tell us a little bit about the project and what has taken place thus far?
Hi, members of the council, again, I'm Jason Femright, I'm the city engineer. Met many of you as we've been following this process. We're through a number of steps here for the 2019 Street and Utility Improvement, and what we have here tonight is called the assessment hearing. After, I'll give a brief introduction to the project and where we've been. I'll turn it back over to the council, and then you can address questions to them. They can ask me, but we'll kind of address questions to the council. So, we started this project back in around November of 2018. Council authorized the feasibility report. We looked at the overall drainage areas, improvements, streets, sanitary sewer, water main, and obviously a large storm sewer outlet, which was kind of the major reason why we started looking at this project down in Clinton Street. So, we went through the improvement hearing, that had original, or the preliminary assessment role. Those were some preliminary assessments based on early engineer assessments for the improvements that are included in the plan. And those were mailed out to everybody, and we were invited in here. The council at that point took comments and elected to continue to move forward with the project. They authorized us to survey the project, design the project. Through that process, we also held an open house meeting here at the community center. We had boards of where we were with the design, some of the initial changes from the feasibility report to the final design, and kind of where we were at during final design. We listened to property owners, took comments, questions, and explained where we were in the process, and then continued with our design of the project. We brought those plans back to the council. I guess one other quick step in there, we did coordinate with Highland Creek Watershed for the connection of these improvements to that Highland Creek, and were approved for those. Brought the plans and specifications back to the council. They approved to go out for bids with those plans and specifications. We opened bids on April 1st here at City Hall, and we collected those bids, and we did receive two bids. Lowest bid was from William Mueller &amp; Sons for about $2.447 million. We reran the assessment role based on those numbers, and those are the notices that were mailed out to everybody. I have copies of the final assessment role. If you want to, we can pass those around, I have 25 copies, that's the final numbers from the bids themselves. So, I've... We brought that back to the council, we advertised for the hearing that we are at tonight. And so, here we are presenting those final numbers, and it's an opportunity for you to address the council, provide comments to them, for them to essentially tonight make a decision whether or not we continue to move forward and authorize the contracts for the contractor to build these improvements. So, that's kind of the just... Excuse me, the step we're at, the schedule. It was a regimented process that we followed under Minnesota State Chapter 429 for levying assessments. So, again, we've seen the schedule. I've presented that a couple of different times, so that's kind of where we're at this evening. With that, I'll turn it back over to the council. Any other question that you had for me, otherwise you can open it up.
Okay, just one statement I guess I'll make. The council was very disappointed in the fact that there were only two bidders, and they were extremely disappointed that the bids came in as high as they did. But also realized that we needed to hear from you people, and to find out what your thoughts are. We know that there's some deficiencies in that area as far as drainage, but we also know that the cost is higher than anyone expected it would be. So with that in mind, if there's anyone wishes to speak to the council, we'll just wait for a second there to get the assessments handed out. Yes, yes.
Is the microphone on?
Make sure that I have my phone set.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Nessie, I live at 600 East Clinton. And I was wondering if we find any errors on this report, who we should point them out to. If it needs to be done in the meeting, that's fine, otherwise it would suffer. But I also read that the option for a different kind of material could potentially reduce the cost. And I was wondering if there's any consideration being given to going out for bids again to see if there might be another contractor that would do it with the other material.
That has been talked about.
Mm-hmm, so I just wanted to bring that up. So, as far as the error on the report?
Jason, an error on the report, would that be reported to you?
Well, we should certainly talk about it, if what's the error we're talking about?
The error is that 600 East Clinton, the water main is not necessary because we don't have water coming from Clinton. Our water is supplied off of Dayton Street. So, we're being assessed for water main, and we don't need our water supply from Clinton.
But I think it doesn't across private, other private property coming off of Dayton, or is it direct connection?
It crosses private property, but we're in the loop instead of at the end of the loop. A prior property owner had the water main put into our property when the water was run on Dayton Street, from what I understood. For the reason that it would be in the loop instead of at the end of the line. And we have good water from that area, we shouldn't need to have it re-hooked up through Clinton if it already exists on Dayton and it's serviceable.
You don't have direct, right away access to that water. Doesn't it cross another property owner's property to get access to that? Do you have an easement for that? We're just looking up for your best interest to make sure that you...
Well, if we need to get an easement, I think that would be a better option for us than paying $6,000 some dollars for the water main access, so... It's the bottom of the list there.
Okay, so there's two properties there, right?
Right.
Yep.
Nobody has ever lived on that segment of ours.
But it's a buildable lot.
Yes.
And that would require water if we build on it, so that's why we put that in for that one.
That may be necessary, but for 600 East Clinton, there shouldn't be a reason.
Okay, well, if we don't put it in, and I want to clear this up with everybody. So, we've prepared this, understanding where we think we're going to put in services. If we do not put in your service, we will rerun this role, and you will not get charged for that.
Okay.
So, there is still a process here, so if, you know, sometimes we think a service is coming off one side, we get out in there in the field, maybe it doesn't exist. We can re-modify this to bring down assessments. Can't increase them, but we can always bring them down. So, I can take that note, and we can probably talk about that a little bit further, making sure that we're getting you service the best way.
Right, we've had good service, and we shouldn't be trying to need to have it re-done.
You also mentioned a different type of material, did you question?
Okay, I can maybe...
If you'd want to elaborate on that?
Sure. We did build, allow bidding of two different types of storm sewer material with this project. A polypropylene product along with reinforced concrete pipe. So, we allowed both of those in this particular bid. So, usually, we would always just allow concrete pipe for the larger storm sewer. Understanding that we had a unique project here, we wanted to open up to allowing another approved product under MINDODD, and we've become more familiar with that product. So, we did bid with more than one pipe, and they just elected to use concrete. So, rebidding it, I don't envision doing anything different than what we did as far as the type of material that we allow. Because we allow two types.
If you just eliminated the concrete one, would you get any bids? Or just had made it the only one was the public?
It could have potentially came in higher. I mean, some of the risks that I've heard from the contractors in utilizing that type of pipe, they're not that familiar with utilizing it yet, so there's a little concern there. We can tell them to use it, they're going to artificially keep that price poten... You know, they have the potential of doing that. Because the things that I've heard is if they break one or two of those pipes, all of a sudden, their cost savings are out the window. They know how to use concrete pipe. It doesn't break, it kind of takes up some of those concerns in the field. Also, that pipe may have a tendency, if it's not installed exactly correctly, to egg shape. If it's egg shaped, we would come back on the contractor and say, "No, you didn't follow the specifications," and potentially they have to dig up that pipe. So, just the unlikelihood that it does do that is their risk. And they, from what I've heard, aren't necessarily wanting to take that risk. And even in a competitive bidding, they both elected to use concrete, from what I've heard from them. Obviously, I haven't gotten supplier information because we haven't gotten that far, but that's my understanding from both contractors.
Okay, anyone else like to speak to the council?
I didn't go to the first hearing. Is this sidewalk on both sides?
Sidewalk on one side only, I believe.
Which side?
Who decided which side?
Jason, would you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think we went through the feasibility report, final design, and analyzed both sides, and the path of least resistance was on the south side, so that was what we elected for a couple of different reasons.
Yet there's more gradient on the south side than there is the north side.
There's a number of reasons why we moved it to the south side from design considerations.
But then why didn't we get a second map on that issue?
That's what it was brought out at the open house, we had it on the south side at that time.
Well, there's a lot of people that can't make all the meetings.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not able to hear the people in the audience when they're speaking.
You'll have to come up and use the microphone.
Come up to the microphone, please.
So we can all hear what you're saying.
Howard Breitman, I have a property on Clinton Street. The first map that I got, it was on the north side. And over there, it looks like the grade is all flat, and counting the trees and stuff, I think there's two more on that side than there is on the other side. And I don't understand why, when I got my first map, it was on that side, then I didn't get another map or any kind of information from the city about going on the south side. That's why I want to know where was a change made and stuff like that, who made them changes?
I know after you had commented about that at a previous meeting, I went home and looked at the packet that I brought home from that open house, and that was on the south side then. Because that's the same packet I sent to a neighbor who was in Arizona, who wasn't able to come to the meeting at all.
Right, well, I didn't get one.
Yeah.
So, and the meetings, you know, I've been hearing this all the time with all the issues that I've been here with, is meetings, meetings. People don't make all the meetings, people are not around. This town isn't big enough that you can't come and talk personally to the people that own the properties either. That's what I don't understand. But if this project is coming in so high, I think we should wait and get some more bids on it. Not just two bids, just get a bunch of bids on it, and wait for the, see what happens that way. Because it's not going to cost that much more next year or year after, so... And I think we should have it, if you guys want to have meetings, then we should have more meetings. And then we talk about what side the sidewalk goes on. I think it should go down both sides, because we're only about a block and a half down, it's on both sides anyway. So, why not put it on both sides instead of just one? So that's what I feel, I think you should just not even go after this project right now and just wait. I think we need water and sewer and all this other stuff too, but when it comes in at $2.4 million, that's quite a bit of money. I think there's contractors out there too that would do a better job, or, you know, probably give us a better deal, so...
We've considered that, maybe bidding it November, December of this year. If we didn't get a favorable bid going into late January, February of next year. And I, that really interests me, the one thing I'm concerned about with that is, what happens if interest goes up a percent? Whatever potential savings we could save, the interest will eat it all up. And I guess, you know, that's...
So why can't you start out getting new bids right now? Like, throw it out there again to some people.
I don't know if they bid, did they bid this time of year, Jason?
Oh, we can bid at any time, I don't, there's certainly no guarantees we're going to see more than two bids.
Because it was, it was 12, right?
Well, I think there were 12, and only...
I know you can't force people to bid, sir, but you can also probably throw it back out there again and see if there is some more interest in it.
And the only gamble there, of course, is, or one of the biggest gambles, is the interest rate.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, the bid came high, there's no doubt about that, but the interest is very favorable. That could reverse.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I know that.
We could save $100,000 and spend another $275,000 on interest. Then it'd be even uglier. I guess that's the reason for the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Howard.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody, my name's Pat Neenaber, I live in the 200 block of East Clinton, and I would question if we need sidewalks on Clinton Street at all. It's a quiet residential street, there's not much vehicle traffic, there's not many people walking. When I do, I have a dog, and when I do take her for a walk, I don't walk on sidewalks anyway. So many of the sidewalks in town are in such disrepair, including on Clinton Street. I think west of my house, there's some sidewalks, and they're in tough shape. And I would question if we need them at all.
Just so you know, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but the cost of that sidewalk is not included in those costs, correct?
It's not being directly assessed, it's paid for out of separate funds, not out of the general fund.
Not that we still couldn't take them out, but it isn't costing you and your assessments for that sidewalk.
And I know there's, obviously there's controversy here on which side it's going on. I don't want it on my side, but wherever it goes, it's going to go. I don't know that we need, I mean, there's some streets, Main Street needs a sidewalk, maybe Adams. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is David Welch, 503 East Clinton is where I live. For you people that don't know where that is, it abuts the cemetery on the west side, okay? How wide is the street from my property line going east on the south side of the cemetery? How wide will that street be? Same width?
Where specifically are you referring to again?
Right by the cemetery.
Clinton Street and the street bordering the south side of the cemetery.
So yours is 503?
Yes.
Okay. The street width is specifically right in front of your house, that's what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking east of my house.
East of your house.
Yeah, because the street narrows, the street narrows east of my house.
Yep.
Will that be widened? Okay. I think that new street is a benefit to the cemetery, maybe this is splitting hairs, but has the cost been prorated out of that? It's a public cemetery, and I don't think a public cemetery can be assessed. Is that right? Am I paying for that street in front of the cemetery? Or on the south side?
If all the cost or all the pavement is split up, it makes it everybody.
Yeah, but why would I want to pay for that if it's cities, if it's benefiting the city? It's not benefiting me. Why would I want to pay for that? And is there a way to prorate that out of there? In fact, why is anybody on Clinton Street paying for an improvement to the city property? And that's what I consider it, is city property, and an improvement. Has that been pulled out? The cost?
It has not.
I think you should consider that. Having lived there 44 years, I believe there's tile lines going through that vacant lot, that unimproved lot of the cemetery? Drainage tile? Will that be hooked in to anything with this project? I don't know where it drains now, but will that go into the storm sewer?
If we come across a drainage tile that drains that direction, yes, we will tie that in.
Okay. Again, any cost doing that, I feel should be borne by the city then, not by me or anybody else on Clinton Street.
The storm sewer is through the Stormwater Utility, that's not part of the direct assessments.
Well, you get my point. Anything that benefits that cemetery, I don't want to pay for it. And I don't think the people on Clinton Street should pay for it.
So, all you're putting into some, or going by the cemetery would be the storm sewer? That would affect the cemetery? That's not being assessed to the homeowner?
Right.
Okay. Point being, I don't want to pay for something the city should pay for.
The cemetery doesn't need sewer and water, do they?
Okay. Unless you sell lots off for building purposes. Right? Isn't that correct?
Well, then they would be assessed.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I can think of right now. Do I want the project to go through? No.
Thanks, Dave. Yes, come forward, please.
Glad we didn't have a wireless mic.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Karen Pickelman. I do live on Clinton Street. And someone said, "Can we have some more bids put in as soon as possible?" Would that delay the project?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you couldn't even get to build that this year.
And then we have winter, and I have mud, right? I don't want that.
If I get it done this year, if we rebid it right now?
I want it done now. I'm getting tired of the flooding. And I don't want the sidewalk on the south side neither. Nobody uses it unless there's some kids that like to jump the curb and go onto the sidewalk up the grass. If that saves you guys money, I'm fine with that. But I want it done now because I'm tired of flooding, of all the water that comes down that section, and you're out there trying to clean it up. But I don't want any more bids, if that's the case, to delay it longer. Then it's going to, I think it'll be more, maybe. If we wait another year, costs will probably go up like anything else. Why do I want to pay more money than I am already? So I want it done now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? Yes, come forward, please.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Thoel, and we are just doing homeowners here in Arlington. And we love it. We don't want to pay anyone money like anybody else. And one thing I'm concerned about, my wife and I are both retired, we're on a fixed income. Now, if we can nail $9,000, how are we going to pay that? How is it going to be assessed to us? Our lenders have talked to you, and see if you've got an answer.
There in the past has been a payment plan of what, 20 years, 5%? 10 years, 20 years?
20 years.
20 years at 5%? So...
Well, it doesn't go onto your homeowner? If your taxes are already assessed on the loan?
I'm not sure how it's...
It probably would.
I think it does show up on your tax, yes.
It'd be on the property taxes.
Okay, and I don't want a sidewalk either.
What's your address, Robert?
208 East Clinton Street.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome in.
Okay, anyone else? I know your address.
Wait, I'd like her to state it, though.
Go ahead.
My name is Roseanne Nagel, I also live on Clinton Street. And I also would agree with the comment earlier as far as the sidewalks. I personally, since I knew the street was going to be redone, I have watched and somewhat counted the number of people that have walked on our street, be it on a sidewalk or on the street. I believe it's very minimal. I think that the burden that comes to the people that have the sidewalks is rather great. I realize that the payment is coming from a little bit different source, so it's probably not part of the assessment. But I would raise my concern about the sidewalks, I don't feel they're necessary for our street. And anyone who agrees with me may raise their hand.
Save me a walk up there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, there are a few statements, I believe, that were submitted, I will have...
So we had several individuals who were unable to make it to the meeting tonight, but did talk to me in advance of the meeting, and asked that I express their opinions for the council to hear. Janine Truckee and Taylor Kufal, who live at 406 Clinton Street East. They're not happy about the decision to put in the sidewalk. They've got a beautiful tree, which would have to be removed for the sidewalk. They also inquired about whether or not the city is going to help them then build new, or plant new trees to replace the ones that are being removed. They believe that individuals, when they do go for walks, that they use the street. And so why are we putting in a... And so why are we putting in a sidewalk, which really in the end would not be used? They questioned the location on the south side versus the north side. And they did not feel that they had proper notice. They did not realize until just recently that a sidewalk was even part of the project. So, again, that was from Janine Truckee and Taylor Kufal. The second letter that I have here is from Darlene Pickelman in objection to the assessment cost that's associated with this project.
All right, anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion from the council to adjourn the hearing for the 2019 Street Utility Improvement Project.
Motion to adjourn the hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Bachelor, second by Councilmember Call to adjourn the public hearing on the 2019 Street Utility Improvement Project. All in favor, say aye. If there's no, motion carried. At this time, I would open the public hearing for the interim use permit to continue allowing Northland Drilling to maintain storage units on site. So this is a completely different hearing. And I will turn it over to City Administrator Melvin.
Sir, wait a minute.
Yes. He is here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When Roseanne asked the question, everybody raised their hands. What was the question?
Who was against the sidewalks?
Sidewalks.
Who didn't want sidewalks?
Who did not want it?
The majority.
I got it.
No sidewalks.
Okay, I will now convene the public hearing for the interim use permit. Continue, continue allowing Northland Drilling to maintain storage units on site. And that hearing is open. City Administrator Melvin.
Councilmembers, we've been talking for some, for a little while now about some of the issues related to Northland Drilling, primarily related to noise issues. So just to give you a brief background, the city of Arlington had some testing conducted towards the beginning of the year. We had a meeting involving Northland Drilling, Joshua Hall, as well as the city council. That meeting was with ESI engineers, who are the individuals who came out and who did the noise testing. Since, since that time, we have made a request to Northland Drilling that they take steps and measures to bring the noise, which at that time was above the allowable threshold. Northland Drilling is located in an industrial part of Arlington. However, they do butt up against residential properties, and there are different noise levels between industrial sites as well as residential. So, in that meeting, we had some discussion with ESI engineers. We talked about possible solutions. Northland Drilling indicated that they were going to go ahead and work towards bringing the noise level down to an acceptable range. On March fourteenth, the city sent a letter to Northland Drilling, kind of laying out what it is that was expected of them. That included conducting, conducting testing following noise mitigation. The plan that Northland Drilling put together was to go ahead and to install a silencer as well as build an enclosure to the motor that is located outside the building to try and contain the noise. They have been working through that. I believe I just received today, and I didn't have a chance to take a look at it, so I will allow Josh to have a chance to explain the email. The request from the city was to have the, have these issues addressed by May fourth. I do not, until now, I suspect in this email, have noise measurement results from Northland Drilling. And I guess at this point, I'll just open it up to Josh if, if you want to give a summary of kind of what you sent and where you're at. But the city council will be taking a look at addressing the situation that we currently don't have any noise testing results, and that there was a deadline provided as to when that would occur, so... If you would, please, Josh. Right there.
Mr. Mayor, Council? Joshua Hall, representative for Northland Drilling. Yeah, as stated, everything, I believe, is correct. We did meet with ESI, we did agree to begin noise mitigation issues. Those began immediately. In fact, the city's recommendation and ESI's recommendation was that we perform studies prior to ordering anything at Northland's option. We simply forewent that and purchased, basically, an all-of-the-above approach from implementing all of ESI's recommendations from that standpoint. The silencer has been installed, was installed approximately two weeks ago Wednesday. The building is still being completed. It is, I would say, in a state of ninety percent done. At the time, the city had requested specific use of ESI for testing, which limited our ability to get them out here to test. So as soon as the silencer was installed, we had requested ESI come out, and they did not have time in their schedule to meet the deadline. So that's where we stand. So at this time, literally as of today, the ESI has placed the probe. They did a one-hour study. Pat, I sent you the email, I just received it. It can be displayed to everybody if that's possible, I don't mind that. But that will show a one-hour study of ESI's results showing that Northland Drilling now meets the fifty-decibel nighttime noise standard for the L-50.
When was that reading taken?
Two o'clock today.
This morning or this afternoon?
Two o'clock, this, I'm sorry, this afternoon, yes.
Was it taken in the residential area too, like across the street?
It was taken in the identical spot that the original reading was taken, by the same test engineer.
And when was all the improvements done up to? Like, when were they completed before?
We were completing, we had two things happen. We had a delay in our silencer, and we actually have more equipment coming. So there, I can go into greater detail on that if it's of interest. But we knew the silencer would be probably one of the biggest pieces, and we knew the building would be the secondary piece to solving this problem, or at least we figured. The building has not only drywall, but it also has a very specific sound barrier that we put in. Sound lose every seam in it is done up. That was completed basically on the fourth, or actually before, the sound mitigation piece. We did have, we did find, and this was communicated to the city, because one of the pieces we are missing is a decoupling link between our ductwork and our fan. So this fan causes vibrations. And if you can understand that that goes up the ductwork, and that also creates vibration noise that we're all trying to eliminate, those could not be ordered in a short timeframe, they're custom-built, they are due in at the end of May. We elected to go ahead and put the silencer up anyways, and it actually broke the silencer. So the vibrations cracked the under portion of the silencer, which would be on the noise side of the silencer, not the stack side of the silencer. And so we discovered that, I believe it was Friday, when they discovered that. And so they welded that up this morning as quickly as they were able to. Also a crack on the fan. So that's, you know, saying when it was complete, that's, I would say, for this test, the building is at ninety percent. Those brackets, those custom brackets are not currently installed. And the silencer appears to be in good working order. We didn't have time to further inspect it and make sure. We think it was a manufacturer's defect potentially, but we didn't really have time. So we put it in. And the end result is, as you can see in that email, if you'll scroll down, Pat, the most pertinent point, and again, this is ESI originated this email today. They did an hour-long measurement per the MPCA standard. And the nighttime decibel fifty limit is at fifty decibels. And that is the exact nighttime limit. And that meter stayed, or this meter is currently in the same position it was before. It will monitor for an additional four days. So we will complete the long-term study. But the MPCA requirement is only for a one-hour study. And this is the, this is the most critical or lowest bar number of the four numbers that are required for a residential site. So we eclipse, and just for everybody's edification, fifty decibels, according to the MPCA scale, is a quiet library. So that is the closest proximal residential area. So that's the closest proximal residential space to Northland Drilling. So it, you know, we're down from the industrial, which I believe at nighttime, same restriction for an industrial setting would be seventy decibels. And for everybody's edification, twenty deci, or twenty decibels difference is roughly twenty times reduction in sound. So I don't know if that has any relevance to, to what people are perceiving or hearing. I think people are still gonna hear a fan noise, but this would comply with the MPCA standard. So it's Northland Drilling's belief that we currently meet the standard with what we've put in place. We'll continue to do the study. Unfortunately, it couldn't be completed, that was out of our control. Again, we were restricted to only using ESI, we would have happily used any test lab, but we had to go with them and this is the best they could do for us, given the timelines. Further, we expedited every piece of equipment. I believe a bunch of those drawings and stuff went out to the, to the public, so they can check us on that. We literally went as fast as we could go to mitigate this problem. So in the spirit of communicating and trying to resolve this for the public, that's what we've done. We will continue to implement further noise reduction standards within this. So we have a little more to finish on the building. We have these decoupling links coming. We will potentially continue to modify the stack, but we knew these were the big, big hits to try to arrive at that number.
ESI is staying out there, they've put their equipment out there?
Yeah, the meter is currently placed at, at, I believe, I forget the address exactly, 120 Henderson, I believe, is the address. The same location that it was before. They also spot-checked the other locations that were in the previous test, saw no elevated conditions. So that remains the sole spot where we're having an issue meeting the residential standard. So that will continue for four days. One of the issues that the letter reacts to is also there's a city generator next to the water plant, the water treatment plant, and it kicks on for a half hour once a month. It just happened to kick on today. So just our luck. And there was also a softball game going on tonight. And I know it doesn't seem like, you know, I know the fan is loud, and I understand that, and it's annoying, I get that. I do understand that, truly. But those things all have an impact on this average, it's a time-average study over time. So we expect that we will probably be in the forty-six to forty-eight dB at the end of all of this. At the end of this testing, rather, and we, we hope to be even lower with the further methods that we're going through.
Any questions from the council?
My concern is with, you had the fan up for only a few hours, and it cracked or broke right away. That's a very short period of time. Is it causing a lot of noise to have to be put? How long can we expect the noise to be quiet before it breaks again?
I can't tell you the answer to that. What I can tell you is, again, it, it's an imperfectly engineered solution at the moment because we weren't able to expedite all parts to meet the timeline. So can't, can't tell you when it might break again, I'm sorry. The expect, I think what you're drawing to, if I may, is what's the, what's the city's expectation of the noise output? The city's expectation of the noise output should be that Northland Drilling will consistently meet that standard. Period. We did invite the chief of police out. I know the city had purchased a sound instrument. Northland has some concern over that, just in terms of how these tests are gonna be conducted. If we're gonna be held to this standard, if, if, if there's gonna be complaints or there's gonna be issues. I mean, we welcome it in a forum, but one of the things that happened today, and I will let the, the police department respond to this, but their meter read ten to twelve dB higher than ESI's meter at the same time. And further, I, I, Northland finds it that it would be difficult for a police department to be expected to administer an engineering study. That's a longitudinal study over a period of time. With that said, we're, we're happy to be spot-checked, we're happy to invite people in. We did, you know, we did have the chief of police come in, we showed him our setup. I, I have heard through the rumor mill that there is some belief that Northland Drilling has some capability of changing our noise spectrum. We do not. On is on, off is off for us. There's no other way to say that. That has been proven out in the study, a previous study that the city conducted. It was a very flat, even study, it looked at the noise profile. Other than weather, wind, and things which make for minor differences in dB shift, that's it. So, direct answer again to your question, the expectation is that Northland Drilling will meet that spec. If we can't meet that spec, we'll shut it down.
Can I ask a question right there?
Yes.
It just seems like, wow. Obviously, I don't know where I live, three houses from the plant. I came home on Thursday night, Patrick kept talking to Pat Lawson in Texas. First thing I heard when I pulled into town and got out of my truck was Northland Drilling's dryer. If you're telling me that you're gonna shut that down when there's a problem, it seems like you're thumbing your nose at all of us that live around there, that we hear it, but you're not shutting it down. Thursday night, that was unreal when I came back. And I talked to Pat Lawson in Texas for nine days. And my family said it got better Thursday night, Wednesday it definitely broke. And you didn't shut it down. So are we gonna expect that that's the way it's gonna be?
Would you like me to address?
You may.
Just to correct your statement, and I understand it. To correct your statement, when we discovered it was broken, was on Friday, not Wednesday.
Thursday night when I got home.
I, I understand. Not once did Northland Drilling ever say that nobody would ever hear a fan again. That's not our position. We entered in and came to the city of Arlington. We obtained the necessary permits. We explained exactly what we would be doing at the time we did it. We were issued a permit with I-2 zoning. We even specifically stated that if the city had any issue with what Northland Drilling does, it would be noise and odor. Would be the two potential issues. So, while I do respect what you're saying, we're not guaranteeing that nobody's gonna hear a fan. We're guaranteeing that we will meet the MPCA standard in a residential, from an industrial site, in a residential zone. It's kind of a big accomplishment, to be honest. And I know that doesn't feel that way to people who have to listen to it, I understand that. But that's, that's what we will do.
Josh, just a question, so the, the nighttime limit is fifty, you're at fifty, correct?
Correct.
So I mean, it, you know, how, that can fluctuate, you know, one decibel, two decibels. Uh, I guess one of my questions is, who is it that's doing the, who built the enclosure and who's insulating the outdoor building that you have, that you're working on?
Uh, employees of Northland drying.
Okay. So couldn't, I mean, obviously you've known about this for three months, right? And they're your own employees, so is, I'm surprised that you don't have that all wrapped up.
Yes, you had addressed this earlier, um, I think, I think the point you're trying to make is why aren't we going faster? And I guess what we've tried to demonstrate is, and again, we've sent that information into the city, where we paid literally every expedition fee we could pay. We, we cut every corner we could in terms of timeline. So, it isn't as simple as saying, just go build a building, right? In fact, right now that building currently causes our process to shut down intermittently because it creates too warm of a situation for the motor. So we have further engineering to do, to figure things out to keep running. So, yes, I, I do understand why wasn't that done first, but in reality, the footing for that, which all started with that forming footing, whatever, that started, that was commenced. That project was started almost immediately after ESI made its recommendations. So we have, we have, I mean, we had staff there all weekend working on these very projects, and all last weekend, through the night, working on these projects. So we feel we are, you know, Northland is going as fast and as hard as it can possibly go.
Well, I guess I would just, I mean, just from my observation, I know that, you know, E, ESI engineering, that obviously their business, and so likewise, they too have to work with new clients and people that are coming. You know, and I know that you and I had some communication, and, and the number that I gave you was Andrew's cell phone, which he didn't answer, and so there was a little, a little mix up there, but, you know, in terms of it communicating in advance to, uh, ESI engineering, you know, as soon as you receive that silencer, would you have been able to just give them a call and say, hey guys, we've got the silencer, we don't know when we're gonna be able to install it, but we'd like to put you out of notice, because we wanna get you out here as soon as possible?
We could have done that, it, to understand ESI's businesses, uh, they have only so many pieces of equipment, again, we were restricted by city statement to use just ESI, which we've done. And so they only have so many pieces of equipment, they, they chart out that equipment, Northland has no control over what their schedule is. We have asked them, begged them, borrowed anything we could, um, but again, that, that was out of our control. At the time we received the silencer, sure, I could have made a cursory call to them and said, hey, be aware, we might, you know, have this ready for you, but we, again, we are moving as fast as we can, so, there's a lot of steps that have to go in to, it's not just, hey, let's throw this seven-hundred-pound chunk of steel up there and call it a day. It's, it, there is engineering that has to go into all of this, there is safety concerns that has to go in all this, there is electrical, there's plumbing, there's all sorts of things that pertain to our process. And every time we do something that shuts down that process, Northland is at a deficit, right? So, we, we, and then again, when we first came to the city, we said our intent is to run roughly three-hundred-and-forty days a year, twenty-four-seven, that is our goal.
And I guess I just believe that is, if this is a top priority for you, over-communicating would not be an issue, but, you know.
Are you saying it wasn't a top priority for us?
I'm just saying that if, if you knew that we're coming up against this deadline, that you would have been a little more nervous and you would have been working to make sure ESI was aware, and that we could have diagnosed that this was going to be an issue several weeks in advance. Not that we probably would have been able to change it, but it would have shown that the city, that you were truly doing everything you could to engage that.
I take umbrage with the statement, because to, you're placing yourselves in our shoes, saying, you didn't do enough, that's what I just heard. And I sat here and said, I sent example after example to the city of what we did to expedite every possible avenue, we did what we thought was appropriate. So, I don't know what you would like me to prove on that statement, other than say, oh, yeah, you're right, we didn't work hard enough.
Well, I just, I guess I would hope that we wouldn't be in the situation that we're at now, where we're.
We, we agree.
Talking.
I, I would, I would have loved anybody else to have offered another solution. We, see, it's kind of a one-sided deal for us, right? We foot all the expense, we take not, we, we've, we foot all the expense.
Hold on a minute there, because I think the city initially footed the expense to diagnose the problem.
To do the study, correct?
And we've been taking calls and we've been dealing with residents, so, you, you know, just like, I can't put my, uh, I can't be in your shoes, likewise, it's hard for you to be in our shoes and realize how many calls that we've been receiving, how much documentation we've been putting together to try and communicate and.
So, so the point has been brought up several times about communication, um, I've addressed it several times. I don't know at what point the city ends and Northland drying begins. We, we feel that we communicate effectively, we have kept everybody abreast of everything we've done, we got a silencer delivered in time, we got a building built in time, and we met a spec, and, and by the way, we didn't set the date of the fourth, the city set the date of the fourth, moved it to the sixth, fair enough. But behind you on that screen is fifty decibels, so from my standpoint, we met it. I don't know where we're not meeting it. So, other than having the longitudinal study, which the MPCA doesn't absolutely require, the MPCA only requires a one-hour test. So we're going above and beyond, city requested a longer test. I, I have no control over their schedule, I, I, there's nothing I could have done to change their schedule. I could have let them know ahead of time, but we still had to put things in place, we had to give ourselves the best shot to meet that spec.
And that's where I know you and I in talking, we've talked a lot about how, um, when Northland drying succeeds and the city succeeds, we all succeed. And that's, I think, what I keep coming back to is that, I mean, if we can get the noise under control, we can have happy residents and happy Northland drying. I mean, you can grow the business, you can do what you need, but we need to work together, and so, I mean, I think that's been, from day one, that's been, at least, I believe from the city's perspective, that has been our goal, is to, to help out wherever we can so that you can be successful. And when you are, we are.
I agree, and I believe the example behind you is the exact reciprocal of that. It was our dream to have it actually happen sooner, we've communicated that, but what's on the board behind you is exactly that. And, and we're not stopping there, I mean, I would, I wish to highlight that, we could say, ah, we're good, right? I mean, we could stop there, we're not, we want more, we want it to be better.
Now, you had indicated this building you're putting up, that was, that also is, is something that would quiet things down?
Yeah, when we initially put it up, we didn't have the silencer yet, just the skeleton of the building, uh, we were able to, again, not a full certified study, but, in just rough math, gain about ten dB alone from that. So the silencer portion of it, if we had gone that path as well, only the silencer would not have been adequate in this case to reduce it. So we would be actually be having a worse conversation, in my opinion, at this point, had we not elected to do that.
But the building is not completed yet?
It, there's siding to go on it now, we have to do obviously some vent work to be able to continue our process, so that's what I'm saying is not completed.
So there's, there's some quieting down that it could possibly accomplish?
We believe, yeah, we believe again, if we can in- install the flex couplings, that should alleviate, um, uh, the concerns about the vibrations traveling out of the ductwork, we should gain some from that. We believe we'll gain a little more from the building itself, um, at this point, you know, we just, we don't have all that engineering done, so.
So if this building is going to help the situation, why didn't, why didn't you bring an outside source in to construct it and get it done as quick as possible? Rather than struggling with it with your own crew?
You're implying that we struggle.
Well, working on it with your own crew.
Again, you're implying that we struggled.
Well, you struggled because it isn't done, it shouldn't have been done if it's.
Timeout. Is it done?
No, you said it wasn't.
From our perspective, we want it sided, it has to meet Northland drying's internal standards for what we need it to be, right? It has to meet, uh, we have to be able to send an employee inside that building and have them in a safe work environment, we have to be able to take that fan apart, pull the building apart, be able to do all that. There is a lot of stuff that goes, it's not as simple as just erect a building around a stand, and yes, we could have had Voss or any one of our generals come in and do it. It, it, in that way, it's not complex at all, but in the other way, it would have taken more time to engineer that, that way, and do it all that way, than to just say, we know what we're doing, and we went and did it. And what I'm submitting to you, and I'm not trying to be coy about my statement, is, is it done? I'm submitting to you the sound results, and I'm saying, the intent of the building was to reduce the sound. Whatever is remaining is now for Northland drying to try to figure out how to deal with what the effects, the adverse effects that the building is now causing to our process. So, that is, that is, when I say we're not done, you know, and, and just to be clear, right, I don't want somebody driving by and going, look, uh, they're not done, it's not sided, I can still see the outside of that. My point is, is it's done if it achieves the result, the intent of the building was to achieve the noise result, it has achieved the noise result, that was my only point of the statement.
All right, council?
Do we maybe wanna have Chief Pedersen to stop in? You had mentioned earlier, Josh, a little bit about the discrepancy between microphones, wondering if Chief Pedersen would just.
Someone asked Chief Pedersen to step in, please?
Step in and.
Would you wanna just weigh in on your experience with, uh, noise testing and whatever?
He's not wrong, I sat down there today with the device that we did acquire, um, and there was quite a difference between, uh, the measurements that I was getting, and what they were seeing on their device. I don't know that I can say too much more about it.
ESI's device.
ESI's device, that's correct.
Yep, yep.
Um, obviously it's a much more sophisticated device, and, uh, yeah, I don't know that I can shed a whole lot more light on there. Uh, I was dealing with Seth today, he was very cooperative, he said, come on in, let's go look at the building, um, more than willing to open the doors and let me take a look around, so. Other than that, I, I just have to go on with the reading of the ESI's device was displaying, and I stood there and watched it for, I don't know, ten, fifteen minutes, and it was relatively forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, it hit fifty-one once in a while, but for the most part, it was holding where he's. Where he's showing, or explaining.
How, how does the, uh, Northland drying, you have a similar noise recording device as the police department has, correct?
I'm not sure we, I, somebody had said that, I hadn't been able to see it personally, I now, I don't know that I believe that statement. Northland had a handheld, uh, calibrated device, uh, I could get the make and model of it. It was reading, again, when we had first done some of this, it was reading in the thirty-nines, so also inaccurate, the other direction unfortunately. For us, it actually led us into a false sense of security a little bit, that we were sort of achieving better goals. So, we seem to be in opposites, so we'll have to find a way to rectify that.
One quick question, I know at one point it was down for a little bit, and that maybe delayed a, the, the motor was down at, at one point in the last three weeks, um, or three months? For, for a little, for a short time, which maybe delayed some?
Un- unfortunately, the motor's been down more than once, in the past three months, because.
And there was maybe some potential, if it wasn't able to be fixed, that you were gonna go a different route?
Yes.
And is that maybe in the future?
So, so, I, I'm glad you brought that up. So one of the other avenues we went, uh, went down, uh, is we brought in three different, uh, fan groups, or, you know, Twin Cities Fan is a very large reputable company, uh, that deals in fans. And so we said, look, we've got, you know, we've got this fan, maybe the answer to this is just totally different fan, maybe we can change the sound, maybe we can do whatever, because we didn't know, again, how successful we would be. So we had three different people come in, and all of them kind of concurred that for our application, this is really the best system that we can have. Now again, they were looking at it in terms of our process, not necessarily totally in terms of the noise. Certainly, there was potentially other fans that were quieter or whatever out there, but they would have included silencers, they would have included other things with them. There were some challenges with that, the advice we got out of that, and this is, uh, I, I mentioned continued remediation steps that we're gonna continue to add. One of the other things that they came up with was, uh, balancing, and so I wanna demonstrate the timeline of what we're dealing with here. So they come in January, February timeframe, they tell us what we need to do and the steps we need to go into balance this fan, right? So that would be the end goal, reducing all the vibration we can out of this fan, which should again, help us, uh, quite well. It will help in the case of the, the durability of the silencer and the durability of the ductwork, all things that Northland drying would like to see, uh, as well as the city. So, in order to balance the fan, we had to first pour the footing, then build the housing around it, then we have to align all the shafts. But that's after we get the flex couplings, and after we put the weight of the silencer up on the stack, which will all have an issue with the, the vibrations. Then we have to get all our structure and support in, so there's a sequence of stack-ups here that we, we can only go so fast through. You know, we have to get this item, then this item, then this item, to even be able to balance this fan. And that's our end, that is, I, I, I'm glad you brought it up, because I totally forgot, that is our end goal, is to just rebalance the entire fan. So we, we believe we will be probably an additional forty-five, you know, down another five decibels from the reading you're seeing today. We actually think we'll be down, uh, per that email, we'll be down a couple decibels, um, in just the longitudinal study, but to your point. So yes, we would have taken that route, I think that was your question.
No, just maybe that was something that you were looking at maybe in the future.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, I mean, again, if we're meeting the standard, it would be our expectation to stick with what we have, because again, for our application, it really is the best setup that we can have for that particular unit.
Mayor, may I ask, uh, Chief Pedersen a question?
Yes, you may.
Chief, when you, you say you have a decibel meter, metering device of some kind? Did you have that running at the same time that the testing company?
We did, just this afternoon, yes.
How did that compare?
Mine was reading higher than the, I would say, higher performance device.
So if a, a DSI, whatever it is, was reading fifty, you were at fifty-two, or?
Oh, it was even higher than that.
It was?
It was more of, uh, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine range. So I, I had tried to adjust the calibration on it, that it would bring it closer to that, so that we would be able to do some ongoing testing after they removed the device, and it would be consistent with, or as consistent as we could get it, and I couldn't get this device to read even relatively close to it. On the flip side, I have an Android device phone, and I brought that up with a meter on it, and that was reading relatively close to what the ESI device was reading. We had the same experience, the, the phones work better than the devices that are supposed to work, so.
Is there a way you could have your device calibrated, or?
It came with a certification piece of paper saying it was calibrated.
Okay.
Sounds like we need to send that back, we'll be returning it.
So you gotta believe, right? I think this is a case for Ghostbusters.
I have heard from a couple of other community members as well, that it has been less noisy. I can speak from specifically my house as well, which is on the northeast side up here, and it, it has been noticeably less vibration, uh, even on cold nights. Now, you know, the level of it, we have to base that, I guess, on the professional reading that we're getting, that we're paying for, or being paid for. And I did see it's within that forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty range, at least it was this afternoon before the generator kicked on.
Yeah.
Okay. Josh, did you have any other points you wanted to make, otherwise it is a public hearing, I would like to open it up from some of the people behind you?
Sure, uh, I'd love to hear, I, I, one other thing, thank you for coming out today. One other thing I'd like to address on the coattails of this, and, and maybe you wanna do this in a, in a different format, Pat. You know, Northland drying's goal is to, is to grow, and I think we've, we've talked to council about that. We, we are currently, uh, in contract or in possession of contract to basically quadruple that plant, uh, if not go to five times. Northland is, is at this point extremely concerned from that standpoint, um, and again, that, that concern is. And again, that, that concern is, is, is both driven by business and both driven by genuine concern. Because if we're having this issue now and, and people are feeling the way they're feeling now, if we go, literally go to forty trucks a day around the clock as opposed to six to eight, and most of those during the daytime. If we go to, uh, front-end loaders driving out in the yard with backup signals twenty-four, seven. I mean, I, you know, those are things that, and again, if you read the MPCA standard, those are things the MPCA standard isn't gonna pick up or they're, or they're exempted. And, and so, we feel that it's, it's, it's a real challenge for Northland. I mean, it, it, it concerns us, because we, we're... Listen, we're talking about a four and a half to five million dollar expansion in this plant, an additional twenty to twenty-five jobs in this plant, starting in September. I mean, having that running in September. Uh, we need to make that investment now. And, and so, again, genuine concern, because the people here sitting behind me have a genuine concern, and we respect that. We're about to, you know, I think, I think if this was an issue, I'm, I, just me personally speaking, I'm more nervous about what's to come, not what is now. And I think we will still meet that standard. But I think it's gonna be more nuisance noise, more of that stuff going on. And, and so, that, again, and I, I recognize there's some different faces on the council. When, when Northland originally was permitted and zoned for this, or, or, or purchased this site, I mean, these are things we all discussed. And, and sort of the statement to us was, it's a factor that's been here since long before the vast majority, right? So, it shouldn't be a big deal. And so, we took it on word that, you know, essentially that proper zoning was in place and all that was in place. So, that, I, I, I'm bringing that up now, because I think now is the time to have that discussion for the town. Because what Northland wants to know is, is kind of what you were addressing, Pat, I think is fair, is, you know, Northland does wanna work with the town. Northland does wanna be a good member of the community. We do wanna bring jobs. We do, I mean, I think I've mentioned this before, every one of our employees is a county employee. Every contractor that we can possibly use is from the county or the town. I mean, we, we are purposely trying to invest in Arlington. Uh, we're all small-town upbringing people. I grew up in Roseville, Minnesota, uh, had one staple business, Polaris. And we're very used to, you know, I grew up in a very similar setting to what we're discussing today. And so, yes, I'm on the other side of the proverbial fence. I, I, I get it, I understand that. So, I open that up, so everybody can hear that this is, hey, and, and to your point, business isn't always the best communicator. I, and I've admitted, I'm probably the worst communicator, true, Pat? And, and, and the town, I just, I will say this, this isn't a buttering statement, but Pat has gone toe-to-toe with me many times for you. And, and we've gone back and forth. And, and so, uh, but never in a personal fashion, but he, he's aggressive about it. And I've encouraged you, I've said, hold our feet to the fire, have I not?
Nope.
So, I, I want everybody to hear that that's what we're planning, that's what we wanna do. We wanna know if, if, and, and, and again, I'm not asking anybody to have a crystal ball and go, yeah, that sounds great, or no, that'd be horrible, but I want people to, again, in, in the spirit of communication, this is what we're planning. And we, I perceive personally that it's gonna, it may be worse. And that concerns me. Because what I don't want is people feeling like they have to make more phone calls, people feeling that we're not listening. We will do everything in our power to try to be neighborly. We really will. But at the same time, Northland has to run a business. And that, and that is, you know, and I come only as a representative of Northland drying, right? What I believe personally is completely separate. My interest is solely in the, in Northland drying. So, that would be all I would say, and then I'd open it up for questions. Unless anybody has any questions on the expansion.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? And would you please come up and use the microphone?
Uh, my name's Lisa Pass Vogel, I live on East Adams Street. Couple of things, what I heard, you're, you're quite the talker. I'll give you that. One thing I found interesting is the chief said in a ten or fifteen-minute time span, he saw the number fifty-one. That was in ten or fifteen minutes. Okay, you're talking running twenty-four hours a day. How many times is that fifty-one gonna be fifty-one instead of the fifty that you say you're, you're hoping to shoot for? That's kinda concerning to me. I live there, I wanna sleep with my windows open. I, I don't wanna have to sleep with earplugs in. I'm the type, I can go to sleep with the TV, the radio. It's that humming, buzzing that causes me not to sleep. It's not necessarily like a loud music-type noise. Uh, another point, if I was, if I was having music at my house and it was bothering the neighbors, I wouldn't have had near as many chances as Northland drying has had. Your company has been running, is it ten months, maybe? Seven months? Let's just, okay, we'll say seven months. From almost day one, complaints have been coming from the residents of Arlington regarding the sound. This, it wasn't a mob mentality, let's shut down Northland. At first, it was, can we do something to work together with the noise? I know people that work at Northland. I have some inside scoop. Nothing was done to help with the noise, knowing all the complaints the residents were making for month after month after month. The pipe, that could have been turned a different direction, that didn't get done until two weeks ago. That could have been done six months ago. I know that directly from Seth. There's a lot of stuff I know directly from people that work at the company. You can't say that you're, you're trying to work with the community. You waited until the last possible minute to do any of these things. And I do believe I read in one of the meetings that it was Northland that said, it, it might be, it, it, it's gonna take us three months to get the silencer issue taken care of. I believe that's where the May fourth deadline came up. I don't think they've just picked May fourth out of a hat. I believe it's because Northland drying said it's going to take us three months. So, for you to sit here and say, it was because of ESI, it was because we had to order this, because we had to do this. Your company waited until two weeks ago to even attempt to put these things in. And then, when I'm confronted with, oh, Lisa, isn't it nice, isn't it quiet? For two days. And then it broke again. Which is consistent over the, how many months this company's been running. But you're gonna sit here and go by a one-hour test that said it showed fifty, and you're hoping it's gonna be like that. What, what about when it breaks next time? What about when I can't sleep again? My suggestion to the city council, at this point, this has been a big game of, oh, we ordered this part, when really, they didn't. It was a week later, they ordered a part. That one, I know for a fact. Consistently, my opinion is, your company should not be allowed to run until you show that all of these things are in place and they're gonna consistently run at a noise level that was, is within the state guidelines. I haven't even started talking about the smell yet. And, and you're talking about you wanna up the business four to five times what it is now? When my granddaughter comes over and says, Mom, your, or Grandma, your town stinks. I can't open my windows, it smells so bad. I have people from your plant saying, yeah, you might not wanna sit by me, I smell really bad right now. But then, in the next breath, oh, our plant isn't producing any smell. There's an awful lot of inconsistencies. And you just sat up here and just talked circle after circle after circle, when the bottom line is, can you guarantee that that noise level is gonna be what it should be at? For the rest of the time that you're open? And until, my opinion, until you can display that's what it's gonna be like, you shouldn't be allowed to run. You didn't make the deadline, you had plenty of time. And now, it's just more excuses. I guess, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to speak? Yes.
Hello, I'm Mr. Todd here, I'm at one-twenty Henderson Road, right next to, uh, the trailer park there. My concern isn't about the noise at night so much. I can sleep through a lot, but, uh, it's the daytime noise and smell. You know, when I wanna put my house up for sale, I have to wait and try and time it right, so when their stacks aren't running, I can kinda get showings going. Because as soon as they open up the door and they got the smell, they're gonna walk away. You know, that's, that's, you know, all I have to say about that. But as far as them having the forty to fifty trucks showing up, um, like you just expressed about the expansion, I would like to at least propose to have the road on Henderson Road, uh, no truck zone with bike paths there, the kids playing on that road. Those trucks do not stop at the stop sign. You know, they are just blowing right past it. Um, there's a lot of kids on that road. There's a lot of people walking on that road. The track team runs that road for practice. In forty or fifty semis, that can't happen. That's not gonna be acceptable, in my opinion. They're gonna have to find a new way in and out of there. I know it's a main thoroughfare, that's a busy road, but it's also a bike path on both sides. And have all those semis come through? If they wanna expand, they gotta expand a street elsewhere, too. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Cassandra Barnes, I live at one-oh-four East Main. Um, I have a few concerns going into the future as well. My concern's also being this one-hour study done in one location. I get that the original studies were done in multiple locations. I understand that most, if not all of those, were outside guidelines.
I believe the original was done in one location.
Just one location, okay.
Same one.
Well, then, I have a great problem with that. Because I have talked to people who live closer, maybe, you know, near this one location, and they don't hear it nearly as much as we do. Now, whether that's wind condition, weather condition, I can tell you for sure, it's quieter downstairs. My house, I have a three-level house, so the middle level, it's pretty close to ground level, is quieter than, say, my bedroom, which is upstairs. I can say that for a fact. So, wind, weather, it seems moisture in the air is an issue. So, testing for one hour in one location, or even expanding to four days in one location, or a couple locations, or whatever it's going to be, is not going to be a good cross-section, in my opinion. Because before any of these, um, remediation techniques were put into place, there were times where it was quiet. Like, it was running, you could tell it was running, but it was quieter than like the nights you just couldn't sleep. My guess is that's due to weather atmospheric conditions. Yes, you can't control that. But this needing to be within this fifty DVA should be regardless of these conditions, regardless of the area it's in. That's my concern, is that not enough, um, surveying is being done? And that these results, even if they pass, we're gonna continue to have issues with noise. And we're not going to have any way to take action? If this is just written off as it's done. They passed once, it's done, this one location, we can't do anything about it. Well, for those of us that it's not working for, then, you know, what do we do? And like somebody brought up, if my neighbor's playing their music too loud, the police don't come out with a noise device and see, oh, yeah, you know, you guys are just above the legal limit, you gotta shut it off. No, they come out and with common sense go, holy crap, that's too loud. And they go over there and they tell them to turn it off. I don't care really what this information says. Yes, I would love to be within the legal limit, I think that's fair. I understand businesses have to follow guidelines. But I don't really care when I can't sleep. I don't, I don't care if the numbers are technically okay. If you have this many people making complaints, it's an issue, period. Now, either this issue is gonna be an issue with Northland drying, or it's gonna be an issue with the city of Arlington. We have already looked in to legal advice on where we should take this if something isn't done. Now, the city stepped in and they did start working with Northland drying about doing something about this noise. So, we've put off searching out those legal means. But if this becomes an issue and we're told, well, there's nothing we can do as a city, 'cause they passed, then our next goal is to go into privately searching out our legal options. And, I mean, I don't know, I think everyone in the audience is pretty angry. And I would assume most, if not all of them, would be that angry as well. When you haven't slept, or you can't count on a good night's sleep for seven months, you get a little wild. Like, and I understand Northland wanting to make money. And yes, their employees have the right to work, but guess whose work is being affected? Guess who, who's doing a bad job? Guess who's getting injured on the job, because they haven't slept in seven months? There has to be consideration for not just this business that may bring twenty to twenty-five jo... You've got more than twenty to twenty-five people complaining about the damage the business is doing. I don't care about the good it's gonna do. I don't care that he wants to make money. I don't care that he wants to grow the business. I don't care if the city thinks it's beneficial to them, I don't care, I don't care any of that. If it's not beneficial to the citizens, which we're saying it's not, then it needs to stop. Period. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? I think we're gonna have to start putting a limit on it here, so we get, get to the rest of our meeting. But if you, something brief, please?
Um, my name is Chris Miller, I live on one-oh-nine Henderson Road. We're right next to the factory here. And I do appreciate business. I, I understand we need business in our town. But there comes to a point where we need to think about the residents. It, personally, it has been a struggle. My life has totally changed. My family doesn't come, 'cause of the noise, and there's the smell. The trucks that go by, I, I realize that road is probably bad in the back. But it is noisy, those semis cannot get around, they have to back up, go forward, back up. And it is noisy. I could go on and on, but I'll make it short, there are health risks. It affects families from children to the elderly. And it has to stop. I'm glad that it's at the fifty, but I feel it should be lower. And also, um, I don't wanna open the windows, I don't wanna wear earplugs every night and try and sleep. It's just, it's just really difficult. So, I do appreciate your, your work at it, so do appreciate it. And if you do grow, it scares the bejebies out of me, because I don't know what you mean by that. Is there gonna be more noise, more trucks, more smell? But I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your...
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else wish to say something that probably hasn't been covered yet? Or starting to repeat? Okay?
Uh, my name is Bailey Hakes, I live at one-twenty-four Henderson Road. We're former friends of Seth. Hung out with him very often, almost every day. And he was the one who has told us that he can control how the, the plant runs, whether it's louder, quieter, how much. He would tell us before he would leave us that, hey, I'm working tonight, so it's gonna be a little louder. Keep earplugs out. Be ready. Because I'm working. So, for you to say that they can't control it, either he's lying, or you're lying. Which is it? Okay, I'm done, thanks.
Thank you, Bailey. All right, anything else that we haven't covered? Hearing no more comment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing.
Motion to adjourn the hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Batra, second by Councilmember Haddledstede, to adjourn the hearing of, uh, public hearing for interim use permit to continue allowing Northland drying to maintain storage units on site. That item will be taken up later in the agenda. Uh, Haddledstede. Hattlestead. Did I call the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The public hearing is adjourned, and I will then resume the regular meeting. Is there anyone wishing to address the council at this time? Thank you, Josh. Wishing to address the council at this time on any other subject? Hearing none, we'll move on to, to the announcements.
The first item council members included in your packet is an update on the library plans. The Arlington Public Library will officially be closed Wednesday, May eighth through the twenty-second for a project. They're having a makeover, which will include repainting and also re-carpeting of the library facilities. No patron services will be available during that time, except for picking up materials by appointment. Also, access to the drop box will be available twenty-four hours a day for individuals to drop or return materials. The schedule is to, on Wednesday, May eighth, have staff members begin removing materials from the shelves, and they'll be packing them into a couple on-storage site, on-site storage containers that Kirby Mike and Community Work Service guys are helping them to arrange. So all the books in the library will actually have to be moved and put into those storage containers, so that they can get in. From May eleventh through May fourteenth, the painters will be in there doing their work to go ahead and redo the building. And then last but not least, they'll be working on the carpet installation from May fifteenth to seventeenth. So, Wednesday, May twentieth through twenty-second, they'll be moving the materials back into the library, and then hopefully everybody will be able to come in shortly after that to enjoy a new library. So, that was one of the announcements. The second announcement is the Arlington Logo Design Contest. Just a reminder that that is open through May fifteenth. We're looking for residents, or anybody who has an artistic flair, who is willing to take a look at helping to design a new city of Arlington logo. So if you are interested, please contact the city offices and have your design submitted prior to May fifteenth. The third item that we have on there is the, is the Cancer Cruise, which is scheduled for Saturday, May eighteenth. This one will be benefiting Aaron Sharpie. For those of you who aren't familiar, in two thousand and eleven, Aaron was diagnosed with kidney disease and received a kidney transplant from his aunt. In two thousand and fifteen, he was diagnosed with melanoma and underwent surgery and radiation. The anti-rejection medication he was taking for the kidney transplant was reduced, and oral immunotherapy was started. In two thousand and eighteen, Aaron again had surgery to remove a lump on his back, as well as malignant tumors on his spine. The anti-rejection medications he had been taking since the kidney transplant had to be stopped, which will result in kidney failing, and Aaron will again undergo dialysis. Aaron is not able to walk, and is currently doing his physical and occupational therapy at his home. All of the proceeds raised on this five K will assist Aaron with his medical expenses. My apologies.
That's an old one.
I'm sorry. We'll move on to the next item. My apologies.
They're still doing the run-in honor of him.
They're still doing it in his memory, yes, yes.
Thank you very much. My apologies for his loss. Moving on to the next item is the blood drive, which is scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-first, here at the Arlington Community Center, from twelve-thirty to six-thirty. To schedule an appointment, please contact Karen Pickelman at five-oh-seven-nine-six-four-two-eight-eight-two. The Arlington Farmers Market will be starting up on Monday evenings from four-thirty, four, I'm sorry, four o'clock until six-thirty, starting up here on June seventeenth, in the Arlington Community Center parking lot. A variety of programs are scheduled for each month. Some of the special events that they have include the Hands-on Produce, where kids are given money to spend on fruits and vegetables. Home-based businesses, where vendors are encouraged to showcase their home-based business. And lastly, Taste Buzz, which is a hands-on tasting activity for young children. So, please feel free to come on Monday evenings between four to six-thirty from June seventeenth through September twenty-third, here at the community center. Last item that we have is the League of Minnesota Cities Conference Bulletin. I know Laura has reached out to individual council members, to see if anybody would be interested in attending. If anybody would like to be registered, please feel free to contact Laura in administration. Those are your announcements.
All right, nothing under communications, so we'll move right into item number ten. Street Department update, Street Supervisor Kirby Weckworth, is he here?
Yeah, he's here. I'm sure he comes.
Just got introduced.